So, welcome everyone to the Exeter School Board Meeting Tuesday, November 8th. It's starting a little late at 6:09 PM. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation blessed with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so we have 30 minutes of public input. We're going to start right now at 6:10 PM. I have my phone here. I can turn that.
I can time it.
You can? Okay. So that will go till 6:40. I don't know if we have any members of the public here that would like to speak, but if anyone comes in, they will be allowed to do so during that time. That brings us to the PTO update. I still don't think they have anyone who's filled the--
They're not here, but they have--
Yay!
--two new co-presidents.
Yay! All right, that's wonderful. So that's great. So we'll look forward to seeing them. Shall I-- Is there someone that we can reach out to? Well, I know way back when--
Yes.
--when I was the president--
Yes.
--Mr. Keyes had to say to me, "Do you know we like the PTO to come to the school board meeting?"
That's a good one.
Yes, so--
Do you want to send you the names?
That'd be great. And I'd be happy to send them a note and invite them to come if they're able.
Sure.
Great. Okay. SAU 16 Administrative Update. Are you ready, Esther? Okay, go ahead.
So our couple of our administrative updates, obviously-- Oops. Yep. We're working on budgets, and you'll see your first presentation of a draft budget for the fiscal year '24 tonight. Administration, we've met with Molly, I think, at least four, or five, six times, and we've practiced presenting once, so they are well-prepared to roll tonight. Just reminding the board that we have set up on December, I think it's 6th or 8th, whatever that Tuesday is, we have a budget workshop already on the calendar. So hopefully, you can hear it tonight, ask some questions, but then have some time to reflect on it and really get into it at the budget workshop, should you choose to keep that on the calendar that way. We also do have a school board meeting scheduled the following Tuesday.
Okay.
So sometimes you, as a board, decide to combine it if there isn't a lot of questions, so just a heads-up on that as you listen tonight. And also, moving forward with some DEIJ work here in Exeter Elementary, Andres gave me kind of an updated bulletin report. He has been supporting school administration through around specific incidences and so on, on an individual basis, kind of a case-by-case basis. One of the cases being what's been brought up at public in the board meetings in the past. He's also reviewed and practiced using the policy we have in our district around banning books in our libraries. All our administrators reviewed that policy and then did an activity going through how it aligns with curriculum and what standards, and so in case that comes up, they're prepared. And each principal brought a book they thought might be one that perhaps could fall into that category for some people, so it was a good activity and helpful, I think. He also supports the DEIJ school committee in designing workshop materials for the staff PD day. There was an early release, and all the staff participated in some DEIJ, and he helped prepare that, and I think also with Abby. Did some prep for that over the summer. So if you want more information on that, I'm going to have to defer to Abby. Also, the Anti-Discrimination Task Force with the leadership of Andres is continuing to build a bias/discrimination reporting protocol for our schools. The task force is composed of assistant principals from all levels, educators, parents, caregivers, students, and community partners. So they're working on that protocol for our schools.
What is the name of the task force?
The Anti-Discrimination Task Force.
Okay, thanks.
And finally, school DEIJ chairs have been chosen. We have an ambassador program we wrote into the grants, trying to build capacity at the school level, since Andres can't be in all the schools all the time. I believe Abby will be the ambassador here--
Surprise!
--at Exeter. And so every school has one. We're hoping maybe someone else would also join Abby in that, because we do have it written in the grant for two people, one for each school essentially, even though Abby works in both. And then CMS and EHS have two people in their buildings. So he'll be doing training with those ambassadors. Took some time for it to get approved through the grant, and then we posted it, and then so he's now-- Everyone's been named, I think, except one elementary district hasn't chosen their ambassador yet.
So we're going to have ambassadors that are essentially assisting--
On-site.
--and supporting Andres, so if something happens or it's a question that needs answering--
Yes.
--they can answer on his behalf.
A resource for teachers, a resource for other administrators to kind of, you know, work through and talk through. He's also working on, I know Tanya asked for kind of what we're calling a guide or a chichi, to use an equity lens when they're looking at incidences. So kind of a stop-and-breathe, kind of look through some questions we may not have considered in the past, just trying to make sure that our administrators feel supported and like there's a process and some protocols to look at when they have an incident that might be related to a marginalized population.
Okay, great.
Just going back a minute, when you-- the reporting protocol, can you just say a little bit more about like what-- maybe, and I-- maybe, if you're able, to say a little bit more about what that is? Is that just a protocol to like, if you see something, how it gets communicated? Or is it also a protocol of like, how then a response flows?
I would have to defer to Andres--
Okay.
--because I think that-- It's my understanding from talking with Andres today that they really want to be clear about their messaging.
Got it.
So I don't want to misspeak.
Okay.
They really want to run that through, and so I anticipate in January--
Right.
--he could expand on that for you.
Thank you.
Other than that, we are taking-- You have the one-- two of the presenters at the national conference next week at the NABIDA, which is the National Association for Behavior Interventions and Threat Assessment. And so Exeter Elementary is well-represented. In fact, we're the only team from SAU 16 that's presenting at the conference, so we're looking forward to that. And our topic is engaging the family, the K-5, in the BIT process, which is the behavior interventions when there's a threat assessment. So thank you for all the work they've been doing on that, and I'm looking forward to presenting with them. And we practiced today, and we're ready to go.
What is NABIDA?
The National Association for Behavior Interventions and Threat Assessment. It's where we got our BIT team training.
Yep.
So they have an annual conference, and it's in-person again, so we're going on. And well, we put our proposal in, and it got accepted to present, so--
Excellent.
Good job.
Excellent.
Yeah. And that's about it, I think, right now.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sure.
I'm going to put Abby on the spot right here and just say, is there anything else you wanted to add with you being sort of one of the ambassadors, if you ever heard of that, that you found interesting or things you might want to share with a greater audience?
Well, he just names them this week and said-- So I guess about an email saying that he's meeting with all of us in the future. So I'm assuming it's going to be very much like sort of the SAU-level DEIJ committees that we used to be a part of. I can speak a little bit about Exeter--
Yes.
--to the committee update right now.
Yeah, that would be great. Is that good with you?
All right. So, hi, I'm so happy to see all of you again. It's been a little bit. So I guess the most exciting thing I wanted to share was that on March 14th, we're going to do our professional development again, where we're going to be running the same sessions that we ran last time. So there's a session on LGBTQ, run by Seacoast Outright. There's a session on microaggressions. There's a session focused on classroom libraries and books and that sort of thing, and multiculturalism. There's a section on holidays, traditions, and celebrations, and then one that focuses on our seven forms of bias, as well as our cross-cultural norms, that the same group of people are running through every time, so are people new to our district. And we'd love to invite the school board to be a part of that day. And as we were kind of meeting as a committee, we were thinking about our commitment to continue to honor DEIJ professional development for our school board, and so we'd like to extend our invitation to you, and we'll send you updates as that comes out, so you can pick which session you'd like to come to--
That's right.
--if you're able to. Let's see. We had our first meeting, so we've decided to have less meetings, but longer durations of time. We really felt like we were just slammed during our time, that we were meeting for our DEIJ committee. So we've broken into some groups, and we've got our Community Professional Development Group. We started with-- Tanya worked with Mariam, and they put together kind of like a newsletter around restorative justice and asking and eliciting feedback from our caregivers, and hoping that we can continue to engage caregivers in some way, shape, or form to keep asking questions as they have them around sort of the topic of DEIJ. Another group is working on equitable classroom libraries. We're also working on physical spaces throughout the school and how we can visually represent And we're just going to continue to keep looking at PD opportunities. Questions?
No, I think that's great.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Abby.
Dawn, I have one more.
Oh, yes, please.
Can I have one? I'm just-- You go? You good?
Do you have a question for me?
No, I have one with--
I think a different--
Thanks, Av.
Thank you, Abby.
We do have a resignation from teacher Elizabeth Barlow. She is currently out on leave and has sent in her resignation due to her inability to secure full-time daycare. So we have-- I would ask the board to accept that on the condition that she gets released when we find a suitable replacement, because she is under contract and has signed a contract.
Yes.
So I know we're working on it. The job is posted. She was planned to be out through the end of November anyway, but fortunately, she gave us the end of October, so that gives us about a month. Hopefully, we can find a good replacement.
Great.
So I'd asked the board to accept Elizabeth Barlow's resignation pending finding a suitable replacement.
Does anybody have any questions about that? Nope. So if it's a yes, we will accept the resignation upon finding a suitable replacement.
All right, thank you.
So do we need to take a motion, or no?
Sure.
Do we need to--
Sure. I'll move that we accept a resignation with regrets pending finding a suitable replacement.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Esther, I did have a question. There was on the agenda, there's an update on HB 1178.
I think that was with Patty. Do you want me to do that now?
Oh, okay.
No, it was up here. It's up here at SAU 16, but that's okay.
Do you want me to do it now?
Sure, if you're ready. Or actually, we can, if you want to get in there, why don't we move on to Molly with the financials?
Okay. All right. Thank you for signing the manifest. I have them in the folder. So I have included the first comparison from the previous month. There are some big swings. So for regular ed and special ed, we were still building the encumbrances, and when we start the year, we have what we call unfilled positions. And then if, when they're brought in, a new position is formed, sometimes we'll have a double encumbrance. So what we did is we really sat down with HR to determine what are they still hiring for, what's in the budget, and really scrubbed it across all schools to say, okay, what is truly still out there? So that's what these swings are. Technology, we had some purchases. We had some encumbrances added. We added the student transportation for special ed, because we received the first bills of the year, and were able to add the encumbrance for the full year. And then just, we received the full-- the first bills for the employee benefits, so we adjusted the encumbrance based off any changes of selection of plans or people adding or deleting plans.
Which sections are those in, Molly, just so we can quickly flip to it and see it?
So benefits are all under 2,900. Transportation is 2,700. Facilities and maintenance would be 2,600. Regular ed is 1,100, I think, and special ed is 1,200.
So does anyone have any questions?
Let me just-- 2,700 transportation.
Sure.
So I just had a question regarding-- I think it was on-- If I look at the notes that we got, it was on page 5 of 48. Is that what we're--
So I think you're actually looking at the budget for next year.
Okay.
So this is current year.
You're talking about this.
So this right here is just how we've-- So it's a one-pager that looked like this. So this is the current-year budget.
It should be in here. Oh, in here. Okay. This one here. Okay. Yep, got it.
So every month, we put a little summary page on the top--
Got it.
--as to what are the changes from the prior month. The beginning of the year is always difficult, because we're building encumbrances, adjusting things as first bills come in, and then you have the one-pager behind it, which we do by function. So the line-by-line is actually what my friends here are going to talk about in a second. And I'm happy to answer any questions over email, too, if you have any questions at any point in time.
Sorry, we're just taking a minute to kind of-- Okay. Anybody need any more time?
No.
Okay. Okay, so Esther, you ready?
Sure. Yep, I have the document here. Basically, we found a frequently asked questions document that was put out by the Attorney General Department of Justice out of Concord, and it has a section on how does HB 1178 impact school safety, or what's the effect? So we've been told that the potential or perceived threat, they're still depending on see-something, say-something. That's still enforced. That law doesn't prohibit that, as well as if any individual feels threatened or believes that a crime is incurred or is about to occur on school property with or without a firearm, that person should immediately contact enforcement or RSRO in the high school or middle school and activate their local emergency plan. So what we have talked with Chi Pu about is that if a person comes into our-- we all have those locked vestibules areas, and there is a weapon, our administrative assistants would ask to reschedule that meeting off of school grounds, because they don't feel safe of having a person come in the school with a gun. So we'll have the meeting, we'd like to reschedule it at a different location. If then that person becomes threatening, then we would contact law officials. So that's our plan right now, to not let them in, all the way into our school building. I don't anticipate that that will be an issue, because if they're there for an appointment and they're choosing to carry that, relocating that to the SAU or someplace where students aren't readily in the building is what our goal would be, and Chi Pu supports that approach.
Okay.
So that's our plan. We have not had that situation arise, to my knowledge. I have not been told that that is, but we do have kind of a plan if that occurs.
And how does that apply to like, parents and teachers or those who are regularly in the building? Is there--
We have our own employee that prohibits them from carrying weapons in school.
That overrides that?
Now, should someone choose to test that, I don't know how that would roll out.
Okay.
Not a great answer, but--
No.
Someone will test it eventually, maybe not in SAU 16, but I'm sure somewhere, and then we will see how that--
We'll learn from that.
--how that goes.
Okay. Thanks for following up on that.
Thank you for that. And I can send you this. It has a bunch of other information, not particularly about schools, but just for your own information--
That'd be great.
--if you want me to--
That'd be great. Okay, that brings us to the approval of meeting minutes. Last meeting, I looked at them briefly. I don't know if anyone has looked at them in their entirety or had questions. I know, I'm assuming it was difficult to do the minutes, because we were recorded. I hope it wasn't too bad.
It's okay.
Does anyone want to make a motion to accept either-- either or both sets of minutes?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
I'll move to accept both sets of minutes, both the public and non-public minutes from the October board meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Patty will second. Heather will be abstaining. All those in favor? Or do we do a roll-call vote? I always forget which is-- We don't need to do any?
Not for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, meeting minutes have been approved.
We have to take a vote.
Oh, take a vote.
Yeah. Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Yeah.
I have to abstain.
Yes, thank you. That's going to bring us to a presentation, I think. And we look forward to it. Tanya, you going to start? You're on here first, whether--
It's under my name, but I'm not doing the whole thing.
Okay. Ryan, thank you.
It's going to be up here?
Yep.
So I printed copies for you all, but we'll--
Should we move over so you can--
It's okay. It's okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I can never--
We'll see. Hey, there we go.
There it is.
All right. So we thought we would just take a moment just to talk about our beginning-of-year data. So there's a lot of universal data that we give three times a year, and then there are other touchpoints throughout the year that teachers will give to adjust their instruction and to make changes, to make sure that you're meeting the kids' needs. But this is just our first round of universal data that we're going to be looking at tonight. So-- So it's important to remember that when we look at the I-Ready score specifically, which is a large portion of what we're going to present, the I-Ready data is based on end-of-year skills. So when you're looking at them and you see that students are in yellow, that's where we would expect them to be at the start of the year, because they have a year's worth of growth to make. So if it says a year behind, it's not really, like, we're going to make it up as the year goes. But just to keep that in mind, that it's reflecting end-of-year. And so likewise, like, red, if it shows two years, it might be a year behind, right? Because you have to think end-of-year terms. So we are currently-- Both of our schools will talk about what we're doing to address students that are already demonstrating green, which means that they are already at grade-level proficiency. We do have quite a bit of students that are in that category. And then what we're doing to address the students that are in Tier 2, which is yellow, and Tier 3, that is red. And if you think about the tiers, again, I think it was last year, we talked about multi-tiered systems of support and what that pyramid looked like, and that Tier 1 instruction is what all students get. Kids that are in a Tier 2 system get 1 and then additional support, and then kids who are in 3 get 1, 2, and 3. And so that's kind of like three doses. So when you're looking at those kids, that's what we would be thinking in. At Main Street School, we are using our classroom teachers, our UA teachers, our interventionists, and special education teachers to run targeted small groups. Lincoln Street's doing the same, except for they're not using their UAs right now. It just doesn't allow for it in the schedule, but it's something that we're talking about going forward of how we might be able to use the UAs there. And we have our staff, both interventionists, so our professional staff, and our paraprofessional staff, who are going through a lot of training to address these different programs, to meet all of the needs of students, and that's the same at both of our schools. So the next page is looking at Main Street School, just a whole-school reading lens. Kindergarten doesn't take this assessment, so that's why they're left off. So this is just-- It's just not appropriate at their grade level. They're not used to using this technology, and they're just learning their letters, so that's why you'll see, like, the total number of students assessed is off, because we're only looking at two grade levels. But you'll see that we have just started our second rotation of intervention and extension. So we're now addressing 89 students in the green and 20 students in the red, and a number of students in the yellow are also receiving intervention. So this is not like necessarily the cut mark, like, if you're in this area, you're not receiving intervention. Some of the kids that we would call like the bubble kids, or like right on the cusp, are still receiving intervention. And we're using several diagnostics to make those determinations, not just the I-Ready, because if you remember, this is a technology tool. So you have some kids who like click, 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 and then we get a flag that they rushed. And so this is just one measure, but we do have multiple measures that we use when we go to determine what the next steps would be for students. So this is just a breakdown of first grade, isolating that grade. We have 58 students who are already performing at their grade-level proficiency. We have 54 students that are where we would expect them to be. Oh, this says first, but my paper says second. Did you happen to go one? Or is it-- Did I accidentally delete something? Go back one. Oh, I don't know. My paper is off.
What are you asking?
Oh, no, it's not. I'm sorry. I'm reading the wrong one. My apologies. So we have 31 students who are already performing at or above grade level, and 83 students where we would expect them to be for incoming first graders. We have four students who are coded as needing intervention, although the number of our first graders receiving reading intervention are 15 right now. And then-- And that's just in this rotation. And then based on our other universal screeners, we have 16 kindergarteners who will be receiving-- Oh, that number's conflicting. I'll have to think. I'm trying to think of why that is. We just recently looked at our data, because we did a deeper dive on some of our other diagnostics, and then we changed our numbers around, so-- But those are about the-- A number of students are going to a trained interventionist to receive like some pretty intensive support. And so you'll see, like, on the breakdown, that they're getting a lot of their instruction and phonemic awareness and in phonics and just letter recognition, and so that's where a lot of that work is going for the students in intervention. And our greatest need for that area is high-frequency words and vocabulary, so those are some of the skills that we're building off of. And then second grade, so I already kind of started reading some of that to you, but we have 58 students who are already performing at or above grade level, 54 students that we would expect them to be where they are coming in as second graders. We have 16 students on here that are coded as needing intervention, but we have 18 students total that are receiving intervention right now. And the greatest area we've needed in this grade level is comprehension and literature and phonics. Going into whole-school math, so this is K-2, and so kindergarten uses our-- the math program, and they have their own pathway that gives them some-- Actually, the lessons are fun, but they're instructional lessons at their grade level, and it's more of counting through their teens and number identification, and so there's some programs that the kindergarteners will be doing in there. But so all students take it, but also you'll see the number is a little bit different, because it's not appropriate for all of our special education students, for instance, to take the exam. There's some English-language learner students that it's not appropriate, so you'll see some of the number off of who we assess. But just starting the second rotation, this is-- We'll talk about how we're going to be addressing all of the needs, but we have 109 students in green and 17 students that are in red right now. In kindergarten, you'll see that 44 students are already performing at or above grade level, 73 students are where we would expect them to be. And then we are providing math intervention for approximately 14 students, and we're using multiple data points, including teacher input, when we're deciding who should receive intervention or who should be going to extension. And in this grade level, our greatest need is for algebraic thinking, which is like patterns, representations, generalizations, and change. For first grade, we have 33 students who are already performing at or above, 80 percent-- or 80 students that are where they should be coming into first grade, and we have 18 students that are receiving intervention at this time. And it's similar in their areas of need, so it's interesting to see the trends and talk about what we could be doing for instruction and making some adjustments. patterns, representations, generalizations, and change. For first grade, we have 33 students who are already performing at or above, 80% or 80 students that are where they should be coming into first grade. And we have 18 students that are receiving intervention at this time. And it's similar in their areas of need. So, it's interesting to see the trends and talk about what we could be doing for instruction and making some adjustments. And then, in second grade, we have 33 students who are already performing at or above grade level, 80 students where we think they should be, and 31 students who are receiving intervention. And intervention can look a couple different ways. So, teachers also provide intervention in their classroom during our win time or what I need time. That's not included in this number, so there are lots of different levels of intervention happening. These are just students who are going to work in like a specialized program with a trained adult. And so, that's where that number comes from.
So, the numbers that you're reciting, though, seem to be different.
Are they off? Uh-oh. Hmm. I wonder if I printed, if I printed the wrong ones. I'm sorry. So, let's see.
Still very close.
Are they close?
Well, like you said, how many students are receiving services right now?
So, the students, the students who are receiving services, that may not match because we're using multiple data points to actually pull those kids.
Okay.
So, like even if I-Ready says, yeah. So, even if I-Ready says like, hey, these eight kids need intervention, but we ran three diagnostics and we're like, actually, like 15 kids might need intervention, then we're going with like the holistic view, not necessarily just what I-Ready is stating. So, that could be, you're right, that could be inaccurate.
Okay.
So, this goes, actually leads really nicely into this next part. These are some of the other universal diagnostics that we use when determining. So, we have a couple of different reading programs. And then, we are, we just started using Akadience this year at Main Street School, which does reading and math. And then, we use the DESA, which is our social-emotional assessment. And we are using our UA teachers at Main Street School to address some of those social-emotional needs. So, they can go to music or to art to work on some social skills groups or other things that are flagged on the DESA. So, it's kind of like an all-hands-on-deck with those three areas between reading, math, and social-emotional needs. And then, this is just a little bit more background on the different types of interventions that we're running. So, this is what our interventionists have been trained on. So, when students are being either a small group in the class or being pulled for a small group, that they are receiving some services through Hagerty, Spire, OG, and Bridges. And that's our current programs to address the interventions.
Tanya, so the Paris and staff members that work with the students?
Yep.
Are, that's what you said, they're working intensively in training?
Yeah.
Is that what they're working on?
They received some pretty intense training last year. And this year, it's like everybody knows what they're doing. And so, we were able to actually start interventions very quickly this year, which was wonderful. So, we actually started, our first round of interventions was based off of the data that we got at the end of last year. We pulled those kids who were still receiving services. And like a couple of weeks into school, they started intervention again until we got our next round of universals done. So, we've been essentially running intervention the whole time. And then, this is kind of lengthy because they're little blurbs that come from our teachers who are super excited to be running extension. But we are offering math extension and reading extension. And those are being done by our STEAM teacher, who is doing some pretty cool things at each grade level. And then, our librarian, who is running some extended reading groups. And so, there's different opportunities for kids to have like some choice in their reading. She is using their Lexile and other data to try to extend their reading, having discussion groups. And our STEAM teacher, who is lovely, she is doing a lot of really cool things for the kids to kind of grow their math concepts.
Tanya, when does the librarian do those groups?
So, it's a good question. Actually, at Main Street School, that's one of the things that we noticed when we were building the master schedule is that there were, there were days, just because mathematically how it plays out, there are certain days where some of those teachers have additional preps in their schedule. And so, we worked with them and just brainstormed and said, how can we fill these preps to still meet the needs of kids? And so, that's where the, our art teacher and our music teacher said, we would love to pull some SEL groups, which is wonderful. And then, our others said, I, the PE is kind of full, so they didn't really have a lot of opportunities. But our other two said we could run some extensions.
That's great.
So, and extensions are also happening in the classroom, but these are, they're trying to, because you see, we have like a lot of kids in the green already. And so, they're doing some like alternating to make sure that all kids have an opportunity to go and see what they're doing for those extension groups. What are you going to say?
You answered my question.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
So, I think my question is sort of what, what does this tell us? Is it just, does it tell us that we have a certain makeup of kids that walk in the door with a set of skills? Does it tell us something about what we did last year in sort of getting people to this level, particularly for the, say, the second graders? Are you able to tell, for example, between the end of first grade year and the beginning of second, whether or not there's been some sort of regression in some of these areas?
Yes, to all of that. I think it is like a combination of some really targeted intervention, which like, I mean, that's what research says should happen. So, we were pleased to see some of those scores. We've seen growth with specific skills, like a lot of growth, which is like, oh, good, we need to keep that program because kids are starting to see that. We did have some of our special education teachers who were working with the third-grade special education teachers at Lincoln Street. And they said, this group of kids has like some good skills they were pleased to see. So, like all of that is reaffirming of some of the strategies that we're trying to implement. And I think just like getting back to school, I don't have any research for it, but I think getting back to school and just being in the routine and having the academic exposure is saying a lot, that kids just being here every day and like going through traditional programs is like, it's, kids are making a lot of progress. And I think it also shows us that there are still some areas of need, that kids, especially as you start getting into, we noticed last year, kids that were in second, third, fourth were some of our students that had our largest gaps. And it makes sense if you're looking at what the content and curriculum would have been that they kind of missed during some of those COVID years or not have had so consistently. And so, we're really watching those cohorts to see like what we can, the resources that we need to dump into those groups to make up. Because they need to make more than a year's worth of growth. They need to make a year and some change. And so, it's like making sure that we're really making the most out of our minutes and that our, our practices are research-based and are doing the right things for kids. So, we did look at growth over the last few years. It's hard because some of the data that came out of some of those COVID years are, I don't know exactly how reliable they are. So, we tried to go back like a few cohorts to see. And it, even that shows that we are making some gains in the, in the trends and from cohort to cohort. So, I think it's positive.
I think we've talked about this before, but I just can't remember.
Yeah.
Are these I-Ready, I mean, I know I-Ready is a program. But is it nationally normed? Like, can we look at this data compared to similar?
It is, and we are above national norms.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I think that's it for me. Want to switch?
All right. Good evening, everyone. So, we'll switch up the hill here to Lincoln Street. And I'll try not to sound too much like a broken record, but there, there is some overlap with, just with regards to the approach and, you know, with some of the universal screeners and whatnot that I'll be talking about as it compares to Main Street. But when we look at Lincoln Street School, whole school reading, we have about 54% that tested either right about where they should be or a little bit above. And then, again, we have our yellow and our red for when we look at our Tier 2 and our Tier 3. You'll see that 417 out of 426 tested. So, that's not that nine kids did not test, it's just between withdrawals or maybe new students enrolling. There's just, it's never, it's very difficult to get it perfectly on, especially at the beginning of the year where you do see a little bit more of that movement. So, we'll go to grade 3. Grade 3 students, you can see the scores. I don't necessarily need to read the numbers off, but you'll certainly notice that as we get into the intermediate grades, that domains such as phonological awareness, high-frequency words are really areas that students have primarily mastered and done very, very well. And so, you see that the focus areas will more often rely on the areas of like vocabulary, comprehension, certainly more exposures to different types of literature and different types of informational text with increasing complexity. And that goes right back to vocabulary comprehension. We'll move along to grade 4, and I think you'll see probably a pretty similar pattern from grade 3 through grade 5 with the reading scores. You know, again, the phonological awareness and high-frequency words, students, students have it at this point for the most part. And if not, they're receiving those really targeted Tier 3 interventions. And again, the folk, the primary focal points being vocabulary comprehension with various levels of text. And grade 5 reading, similar story, you know, again, without reading all the numbers to everyone that you have in front of you. But that's where we are starting. And again, as Tanya said, you know, students are being measured right now against end-of-year benchmarks. So, you know, this is, it's, it's an encouraging place to be, and it certainly gives us a really good data point to really jump in when we talk about our math win, when we talk about our intervention for literacy.
Ryan, when is this I-Ready test again at the end of the year? Is that, you do this again?
Two more times.
Two more times?
January and then end of the year.
Oh, be interesting to see that. I mean, this is just the beginning of November, so.
Yeah, it's January and the end of the year.
Oh, this I-Ready was in September?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
I have a question before we move on to math, so...
Of course.
This is very encouraging that like nearly 50, I mean, and some of these nearly like close, you know, to 50% are already in the green, but we're in the beginning of the year. So, I'm wondering, I mean, you just shared, at least at Main Street, some of like the really targeted interventions. And I wonder, you know, do you, I guess both, where there's a large percentage of students already in the green at the beginning of the year, like, I guess I'm just wondering sort of like what questions come to mind in terms of like growth for those who now need a challenge because they're already, you know, where I-Ready wants them to be at the end of the academic.
Yeah. And what I would say to you on that is, it's really hard to see because there are two different shades of green up there.
Okay.
That, kind of that, I don't know, is that checkered? But that, on the far left, that's probably the population that you're probably most referring to, Heather. The light green is, I think, if you can read the very, very small print, it says early on grade level. So, there's still some grade level...
Okay.
Skills and growth that we're looking to see from that population. But for that far left, that's, that's, I think, where your question's targeted. And there is a slide towards the end of this that I'll, I'll jump into that.
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of ourselves.
Oh, no, no.
Also, some of our other diagnostics show different needs.
I see.
So, it's like, some of those are more targeted skills, where even if they did well on this, we're like, eh, but they still need some extra practice here. So, that's why we're trying to take multiple measures.
That's great.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't tell a full story. It is very promising, but there still are a lot of like specific skills, isolated skills that we need to work on.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Yep. No, no problem.
Excuse me.
Ryan, I was just going to ask you, and I probably should have asked this early on, but I wondered if you could sort of, you know, when we talk about the placement by domain, talks about phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, if you could kind of just for those out there watching on TV, sort of what these categorizations, sort of the definition of those that you see in school?
Sure. I mean, when you look kind of at the top domains, those are some more of like the, the primary learning-to-read types of basic skills. You know, when you talk about decoding, you know, being able to see a word, break it apart, and being able to pronounce it, being able to, you know, develop some fluency. But when high-frequency words, words that you're going to see over and over again, no matter whether you're in social studies class, whether you're reading a story in, in reading class, whether you're in science. When you get to comprehension, that's really, you'll see, I just had my son's student-led conference, he's in first grade, and, you know, the teacher was saying, okay, you know, he's doing a pretty good job decoding, and we're going to start talking a little bit more about comprehension because he's starting to get to a point where he's recognizing those sight words and some of those pieces. So, we can ask him, well, what does it mean if the frog jumped after the fly? Very simplistic, but that is the story that he read to me. So, you know, so with that being said, comprehension is first, especially when you get to Lincoln Street. And that's, you know, Tanya may have a different answer for Main Street, but, you know, I always think of that, that switch in grade 3 where you're going from learning to read to reading to learn. And so, when you think about comprehension, you're really now going into, okay, whether it's an informational or a literary text, what does that mean? Or what can you draw from it? What's the main idea?
Great. Thank you.
Sure. Yes, please. Do we do whole school math? Oh, I'm sorry. Whole school math, the numbers are a little bit different from where we were in reading. And again, I won't, I won't bore everybody by reading the numbers that, that you can see in front of you, but you'll, you'll see a larger yellow section and additionally some students in the red that are a little bit larger than when we were in the reading. And if we go to grade 3? No, no, you're good. Again, you'll see somewhere around 20% in that, two shades of green, a fairly large percent in the yellow. And that could be like yellow, just right on the border of green, or it could be students that more, more are on the bubble of, you know, being a little bit closer to the red side. But that is where, you know, I'll speak to our Math Win program, where students are receiving different levels of intervention, extension, as well as, you know, targeting those skills that students may be lagging a little bit on. Grade 4, kind of a similar story. You can see the domains beneath. And if you ask me to explain the domains, I'll just remind you that I taught ELA, English Language Arts, rather than math, so I'll do my best, but I'm, I will not be as successful. But you can see the different domains that are really targeted in I-Ready, such as numbers and operations, algebraic thinking, measurement and data, as well as geometry. And then, in grade 5, I actually was pleasantly surprised a little bit with what we see in grade 5, just in the, with the higher percentage that's in the green. You know, we're around 20% in grades 3 and 4, where it's almost closing in on 40% in grade 5, which is really nice to see. Similar to Main Street, we have other universal diagnostic data. Akadience is something that we're using across the building for math, and we use it in tiers 2 and 3 for reading. Of course, we have our I-Ready. Our I-Ready will be, again, administered in January as well as in the spring. We have our state testing, the New Hampshire statewide assessment system, I believe, is NHSS, for both math and ELA in grade 5 and science. Then, we have our social-emotional screener, DESA, that we also screen students three times. The first one's already been done. Will it go again in February and then again in the spring? And, you know, depending on where students score on that, you know, with parent permission, there is a full screener there. But our teachers just do a quick screening, just to kind of get a quick overview. So, with regards to, let me see if I'm jumping ahead. Yeah, we can go to the next slide. With regards to Math Win, we're currently in our second session right now. We did a short three-week session. This is new, our, the Math Win program that we're doing with teachers this year is new. So, the first three weeks was an opportunity for students to get used to being grouped. You know, they'll be outside of their primary teacher's classroom in a lot of cases. It gives our, gave our teachers an opportunity to get their feet wet with this new win intervention models with regards to the planning and making sure that we're, you know, that we have targeted instructions that meet student needs. And then, we are now midway through our second session, which will be six-week cycles. And that's, will be what we have moving forward. And that's based on research as far as how long an intervention cycle should last. And so, at this point, I believe we've given our first Akadience.
We've Progress Moder.
Progress Moder. Okay. So, so we have an additional data point that we have now. We've got the I-Ready, now we have an Akadience, and we'll continue to use Akadience on probably, is it a three-week or six-week cycle?
It'll, or it'll be every three weeks through Progress Moder.
Perfect. So, when we look at extension, all students are engaging in higher-level problem-solving activities at their level. There's a variety of things that we use at Lincoln Street that includes, I don't, I'm not well-versed on all of these, but U-Cubed, Groundworks, Looney Math, Kenken Puzzles, Inside Mathematics. Well, we just added exemplars. So, there's a variety of things that students can engage in that are targeted to what their needs are. In grades 3 through 5, literacy extension occurs in the classroom with teachers providing activities outside of the Jour's, excuse me, Journeys Core Curriculum. And a couple of examples could be, you know, teacher-guided author study, fiction, nonfiction, comparison, research projects. And you'll notice that within any of those, higher-level thinking, comprehension, you know, certainly with, when we talk about at their level, picking appropriate literary or informational texts can really target and hit and push those students to the next level, whether they're in the far left or, you know, in the yellow or in the red. I spoke a little bit, I spoke with a little bit more detail about our Math Win, but certainly for, for liter, for students with literacy needs, we do have Tier 2, targeted Tier 2, as well as Tier 3 interventions for students that, based on I-Ready, based on Akadience, based on teacher observation feedback, would qualify for Tier 2 and Tier 3 literacy intervention. And this slide is probably almost identical to what Tanya already shared as far as just our quick summary. But we, we have a lot of PD across, across the building that our teachers and staff are engaged in and continue to be engaged in. We have a lot of different data points that we're looking at. And again, we can't underemphasize or overemphasize, excuse me, that enough that really anytime you're making decisions about students and placements, that you really want to make that you really wanna make sure that you have multiple data points, you know, whether it's an iReady, whether it's the teacher feedback, teacher assessments, acadiants and others. So at this point, I can certainly answer any questions, or thank you for your time as well.
I have a question. So I'm still stuck on one, one point about this. I mean, I definitely understand what you're presenting, and I think it's really great because this is, you know, this is what we need to hear and other folks need to hear too, that we're meeting kids where they are, really trying to, this is a, you know, sort of a beginning check, and then we're gonna see where they're at the end. And sort of that value-added in-between is what makes the difference. Kids that are already there, you're trying to, trying to build their skills. Kids that, you know, need to move to gain those skills, you're intervening and giving them some extra support. One of the things I don't understand, and I don't know if you're able to track it, or you do track it, is whether or not this is just, you know, the group of kids that we have because of the dynamics of our, you know, socioeconomic, you know, parental education background, whatever, kids just come in with this sort of background. Or, or they at a different place, some of these kids that are the same returning kids, where they're at a different place in the, in June, and then when they came back to us in September, they've kind of fallen behind a little bit in terms of that regression question. I don't know if we check if we have, you know, out of the 160 students at, at Main Street that, that went from kindergarten to first grade or first to second grade, are we able to check on an individual level? This kid was on grade-level expectations, and now for some reason they're, you know, they're in the red. Kind of what happened over the summer? And is there something we can do over the summer to help those kids, you know, not have to sort of get a running start before they're up to speed again?
Yeah, I, it's a complicated question. And as far as being able to track data points from, you know, a spring to fall, we, we can absolutely do that. And I think we do look at that data, particularly when students bubble up in those first couple of weeks, when we kind of transition away from community building and started, start to dip our feet into the academics. We can do that pretty quickly. As far as the summer piece, do you want to speak quickly just to the ESA?
Yeah, I mean, we can let her, you know, extended, I mean, sorry, extra summer skills academy to those that were already in the yellow and the red. So your example is, you know, kids left when they were in the green, and they came back and they're in the red. But sometimes the opposite happens. Sometimes they come back and they're, we're like, oh, my gosh. They grew, they got, you know, they developed better, like they were reading more. We do use our lists from, like I get lists from Main Street about who was getting tier-two intervention. We definitely track those kids, and we look at those kids when we're looking at iReady data in the beginning in September to see where they are. And I will tell you that a lot this year did not qualify again, or at least for reading, because they made so much progress just growing up, I guess. But we also had parents who were like, they used to be reading, and we're like, but guess what? They, they don't qualify anymore because they're higher than what we need. There's been a significant, I think, increase in scores and growth for kids since we've come back, I think time to hit it, like they've just been exposed to schools, what school is and structure, and how they're supposed, you know, how it will get along or continue up to have them grow. I don't know if that is your.
I mean, it does. I don't mean that everyone regressed, I just don't, I just don't. There's nothing wrong with having, you know, sort of a student population that kids are a mix. I mean, everyone doesn't have to be on grid, there's nothing wrong with that. That's who they are. And we work with them and try to take them from where they are and help them grow. But I guess I'm just wondering, I'm focused on the summer part, you know, because we do, we have all these resources during the school year that are intense and really, you know, sort of individualized. And it seems, I'm just curious, I guess, I don't know. I'm curious whether or not some kids end up getting a little lost over the summer and it ends up affecting them in a way where they, they lose ground. Some kids can gain ground. And if they do gain ground, is it something we do? Or is it something we put them in touch with? I know we don't put a lot of resources towards the summer. We have some for sort of targeted interventions, but we don't, you know, we don't target all the kids. It's not, we don't have summer school, you know, for every kid. I'm not suggesting we should either. But, but, you know, if there, if there are things that we know that are effective over the summer that are helpful, it may be not that expensive in terms of resources or staff time that we could do something that has a big impact.
I've offered students to families, they've reached out. So for ESA, for example, some families can't commit. You know, they have vacations or they're working and they can't. And so they've asked me for some sort of programming to help them. We have Movie Max, so I've set them up on Movie Max, and they can do it at home independently. We also do, the library comes in, the external library comes in, and has a reading program for them. So there are some things that we can offer, but I, and maybe we should talk about this, but I, I've had parents reach out to me. So, you know, Movie Max, we have like 200 seats, so I can't give it to everybody in Main Street and Lincoln Street. So it's, it is a little bit of a funding issue of how do we do that? So our summer school.
Or who would take advantage of it too. We send, like, actually, all of our students, we do send summer skills packets for ELA and math. And so students are encouraged when they get back, you know, they get a big fun little prize, a book, go, you know, if they get to complete it. We don't have that many families participate. And, you know, so it's, I, so it's, it's a balance, right? It's like, we can make some of these things available. It's kind of like a hit or miss. There's a lot of people who are like, they need a break, which I agree with that too. I do think like, our own population, I think your question about just our demographics, there's something to be said there, for, you know, for a lot of our families, is that when you just look at research, yes, we have kids that are coming in that, that do already have kind of a leg up. And, and so I think that's where you'll see some of the discrepancies. And so it's like, it is a twofold question of like, how do we keep extending and enriching those students? And then we have some students that do have some challenges and barriers coming into us already. And so how do we address those too? And like, a lot of things need to happen in the school day. And for the extended learning throughout the summer, like, we really do look at those kids who need the extra support, who need the continuous routine. They're just used to coming to school, and so we invite those families in to take part of those programs, even if it's not necessarily just an academic thing, where like, this kid really needs a schedule and a routine like that serves them well. So those families get invited too, so it's, it's a complex issue, but we do have lots of conversations about it.
We also do follow cohort. So like kindergarten, they started here, right? And that same cohort, how do they do it first, and how do they do it second? One of the challenges is, like, for instance, say iReady, right? This is our third year using it. Our first year using it, our digital book. So it was, it's a bit of a challenge to see, long-term, how they have to move up through the cohorts, but we do have the ability to say, how are they progressing? And each year, based on our universal assessments, so we have some.
We also move students in and out of groups. Like, we have several rotations of extension and intervention. And so we do follow students that get exited, and there still is progress monitoring to track, to make sure that they're still continuing, making their progress. And if not, then they get pulled into the next rotation, to make sure that it's not like, once they're out, they're done. We do follow all that data on the kids to check for progress.
That's great.
I also think that we've seen, through the support of the board and the taxpayers, we put in a STEAM teacher at both schools now. I think, I'm looking at our SAS scores for our 22. In 21, our science proficient was 52%, and that jumped to 65%. That's a marked difference for, for us coming out of the pandemic. It's for the good. In math, we were at 45% in 21, where they jumped to 59%. And I think you're gonna see that kind of continued because now you've supported, we allowed the repurposing. So there's a math coach now helping plan those interventions and do that progress monitoring. So I just want to recognize that the support of the board and the taxpayers, I think, is also what we're seeing in the data. As well as we did in the summer program, worked with Great Bay to allow parents not having to pick their student, their children up. They could go to Great Bay, so we partnered with them. And we actually paid for that child to then get social, emotional, and some services at Great Bay. And I think that allowed for a higher participation rate for our summer kids.
That's great.
I have a, hopefully, a really quick question, which is, I saw the note about the permanent subs, a lot, you know, freeing up time, space for educators to get the professional development. And I was just curious, sort of, what I'm observing as a parent, I'll put on my parent, is a lot, a lot of like incredible small-group time with teachers. And so I'm just curious, like, how's it going with the capacity of the teachers and the balance of, you know, having the permanent sub? Like, I just, we talked so much about that last year, and I'm just curious, like, to check in on how that's going and where, if there's still a need, or if you feel like your, the staff is well-supported in all of this that you just showed us in terms of intervention and extension.
I, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a big question. You know, right now.
It's supposed to be a quick one, but I am sorry.
I can speak from a Lincoln Street perspective, and Tanya, you can jump in. We, we have five positions for permanent subs. We have three filled. One person is serving as a long-term sub, so we have two available. So when we talk about some of the PD, it is a little complicated. Both Tanya and I have revised our PD calendar several times over. But with that being said, that's just a quick piece. You talked about kind of the capacity, like, we're at our capacity, but like, we can't offer any more than what we're offering. And even that is, is tricky right now. But with that being said, we are, you know, through a variety of grants and, and, you know, Title I, ESER, and probably et cetera. We have a lot of really great PD that teachers are getting from Empowered Math with Carolyn Werster. I think we've kind of touched base on these sometimes when we're giving our, our building updates. Maria Nice doing Science of Reading. We have Deb Bamforth working with both buildings with, with regards to our professional learning communities and, and really helping us to prioritize areas of our curriculum with essential standards that we really feel like these are the absolutes for grade three. These are the absolutes for grade four, so that we're really prioritizing the skills that students need to leave at each grade level with. So teachers are getting on a weekly basis, really high-level PD opportunities. And, and I think that that is making a big difference with regards to just, you know, probably the simplest way to put it is, every time you go to something, you want to get a little tool for your toolbox that you can bring back into the classroom and make a difference with your instruction and your teaching with students. And I think that we're providing consistent opportunities to add to the toolbox.
Very appreciative of our permanent subs. A lot more. We may have one that we're getting ready to nominate. But the consistency, I think, is big for kids. Those people that are in the building get used to seeing the programs, get used to seeing like the way that we do things. They just become part of the community. So it's like a huge blessing that we have that resource. Very appreciative to have the permanent subs.
I'm sorry, one other thing that really stands out to me with seeing this is what's happening at Lincoln Street School in particular, the sort of discrepancy between those that are on grade level for reading versus math. And I know there's been a lot of national news in the past month about that's, you know, a trend that's happened in a lot of places, probably COVID-related to some extent, or there's questions about that and that parents, one speculation I've heard is parents can sort of help their kids more easily with reading. You know, they, they tended to read to them even before they started school and don't really tend to go into math on the same daily basis. So kids are falling behind a bit more. But in any case, there's certainly a discrepancy in the scores that we're seeing between the two. And is there something, I guess I'd ask for you to think about this, is there something the board should be doing in terms of helping you with additional resources or something to sort of help that discrepancy between those two areas? In Main Street, I don't see it as much. There's, it seems to be more similar. There's, there's need that are on both areas. But at Lincoln Street, you really see the discrepancy between those that are ready in reading versus those that are ready in math.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna give you the perfect answer on this, but I'm gonna give you a, I'm gonna take a shot. You know, I, I think as we've discussed, iReady's in its third year, with the first year being remote. When you get into, you know, third, fourth grade, you're moving from addition, subtraction, to division, multiplication. And certainly, as you alluded to, you know, parents' ability to support, it's different as, as you're getting into some of the higher-level math. I think that I'd be really interested, interested to see where we fall out when we get to the spring. I think our Math Win program is extremely targeted and is really going to hit those students in the yellow and red in a way that we haven't in the past. And, you know, a lot of that credit goes to Ms. Donley, Dr. Donley, and Ms. Lambert, and, and Ms. Polykronopolis for really working hard to get that Math Win program up. And do you want to add to that piece?
The scores that you're seeing now, we did sort of the score, like, we've always been a little bit lower in math. Math has been historically like the little bit of a struggle. But I just started reading basket. So we've been talking about how can we, how can we do this? How can we help our math students? Because last year, remember, at this one of these meetings, most of our tier-two interventions went to math and not reading. So that was great for reading, because that means like our classroom stuff was working out, tier-one instruction feeling doing well, but something's happening with math. And we try to, we have, as a district, to switch our math program to try to like help with that, but we still need, these kids really need to push. So that's why we decided last spring to go to a targeted intervention in Math Win, where every single child, every single day, goes somewhere with another teacher or their own teacher at their level, and they get activities and instruction at their level. So a couple of things that have happened since we've been doing this. Math confidence has shot through the roof with kids. They are no longer in the back of the room being like, I don't know how we got that answer, and I'm not gonna ask. They are feeling so successful in math, which is a huge battle for math. So they love Math Win. They love the fact that they with peers, that they all sort of have the same knowledge base, and they're learning together. The scores, our first progress monitor was last week, and the scores, I saw the scores today. I was so impressed, and the teachers are gonna see them this week, so I'm not spoiling it for them. But that was our reaction to the math. We've seen the math score, we agree with you, like, what is going on? So that was our targeted, like, we're gonna just make everybody do math every day. All, like, that's what we're doing. So it seems to be working, but I cannot wait to see the end of the year and see what these math scores go. And then maybe we can do it for reading too, you know, where everybody will also have a little group reading. But we agree with you, and that's, that's what, that was our answer to it.
Deanna, it, it sounds to me, I mean, I just put explanation points next to the WIN when I was reading about it, that it's making math fun instead of sitting in the back hiding my head because I don't know what you're talking about, but involving me and making it a fun learning experience. So that's awesome.
And they just go, they just.
And, yeah.
The critical point here is this is what competitive-based education is, meeting kids where they're at, and that's what the WIN is. So they're in a group, that they feel challenged, but not over-challenged. And this is a great description of why competitive-based education works. Meeting kids where they're at is critical to making, having kids be excited about learning and owning their learning.
And I think of this, the reason why I mentioned resources, it doesn't necessarily have to mean another position. But if it is another position, you know, Esther just mentioned a few minutes ago about the STEAM position and creating that, and how that, you know, we're really seeing some evidence of it, you know, having a positive impact. As we're getting ready to talk about budgets, you know, if there's justification for adding positions or paying for programs or other kinds of things, you know, I think we want to be supportive. I can only really speak for myself. I want to be supportive, but I imagine there are others on the board that feel the same way about trying to, you know, fund those sort of efforts.
So our first year with our math teacher, it just, it works, this college just works.
Yeah. I'm not criticizing, you know I'm not criticizing what's happening at all. I'm just trying to give you the support that you need.
It's supportive, I don't even know what else we would do.
Maybe you don't need anything else right now. You just need to see how, how it plays out and the impact of what you already have in place, which is, which is fine. Yeah.
Thank you both for all of that. Thank you. So I think what's next, Tanya, I think the agenda would be principals' reports, but I think that was a big report. Although I do see something about November calendar and cornfield characters. I don't know why. We want a couple of.
I had asked the principals to do budget and their, this data, so they didn't prepare a formal report.
Yes.
I left them off the hook for it, just to be clear.
Hundred percent, that's what I was.
I'll tell you the fun thing. Cornfield characters were awesome. They were awesome. So that's something I was gonna mention. Yes, a little fun. Today, we had student-led conferences all day. This is the first time that we've done it, like, everybody was required to do them. And so I floated around the building, and teachers who were feeling a little nervous just because people who hadn't tried it, like a new format, feels anxious. They were like, why have we not always done this? Like, that was their response. And they just said, it's so cool to hear the kids talk about what they're learning. Like, the teacher said, I, I learned stuff about my kids. I had no idea. That's what it, you know, where they felt the strongest or whatever. And so that's super exciting, just like, as we were walking in, I was having a conversation about that. We had Spirit Week last week. Our kids came up to see the cornstalk characters, which was, they were awesome, and they had the best time walking around to see them. We had a parking lot finished today at the preschool, so the community's gonna be happy about that. And there is some handicap parking and things that we're lacking, and so we're like, we're excited to have that project done. We're serving our Thursday, we have our holiday meal that we get to assist in the cafeteria and serve. That's always something fun that's been off the table for a while, so that's kind of cool to bring back. We already talked about, oh, go ahead.
Families in for that?
No. I don't think that our families are in this one. So Jean asked if we would be willing to serve students. I think that's kind of like the entry to make sure, like, it gets back out there, but that would be a future thing. And actually, we've been talking lots about ways that we could publicize, appropriate ways to have volunteers come back into the school. And so that's something that we might be able to report out the next time we get together, because we do have a meeting to talk about that and start getting families in. We just, it hasn't happened in a long time at Main Street School, but the dear Officer Petroski, he's coming to work with our second grade. They're really talking about safety, so it's like wearing a helmet, and who, you know, who should you call if you're in an emergency? And he did a Halloween thing with them, talking about medicines and medicine cabinets, all that kind of stuff. So, they're coming to work with our second grade. After-school enrichment's going super well. And I think for the most part, some of this other stuff is already covered. We did, both of us, we had, we attended the Exeter Community Children's Fund. That was super fun to help our students in need at this time of year, like, that is coming back up on our radar of making sure that our students have jackets and all of that. So, there's lots of work going into those types of projects, but things are going well.
Thank you.
All right. Lincoln Street School is doing quite well. Student-led conferences were great. I tried to get feedback from families as well as our staff, and it seemed very positive throughout the day. Our teachers did a really nice job, one of just organizing a format where, for most, most of them, it seems that students took the lead for part of the time, and then the teacher and the parent, or teacher and the caregiver had an opportunity to speak separately, which I think is a really nice format at this age and developmental level, kind of meets both sides of it. One of the things that teachers did a great job is they shared their sign-up geniuses with case managers. So, you know, case managers were able to target and make sure they were able to support and be part of any meetings with their students. We had exit tickets for our Unified Arts teachers to choose one. So, unlike open house where it seemed kind of like a marathon, and some parents were like, "Oh, my God, I've got like 20,000 steps tonight," you know, between going here and then here and then, you know, it was just to choose one. And that was nice. I checked in with Unified Arts teachers, and they said, you know, "It's just nice to have a steady flow." And sometimes, you know, you have staff that kind of get forgotten, you know, with the traditional parent-teacher conference and whatnot. And in this way, the entire building is involved, and I think that feels good. We had our second all-school assembly, October 31st, which was an energetic time to have it. And one of the things that we focused on during that time was coming up with cafeteria agreements. And if you think about our third, fourth, and fifth-grade students and the last time that they had a normal or traditional cafeteria or lunchroom experience, some of them haven't. You know, if you think back to our third graders, they might not have. So, we've seen this is an area that we want to tighten up and support our staff members that have the daily cafeteria duty, which, you know, they're wonderful people. So, you'll see that wonderful sign just to your right behind you, and it's just, you know, we came up with some cafeteria agreements and our peacemakers, and they, they came up and they explained what the agreements were. They did a couple of role plays to show expected behaviors versus unexpected. So, that worked out really well, and we're working towards giving students some opportunities and just alternative activities as well for those last five to 10 minutes where, you know, sometimes wandering minds can get into, you know, poor choices. So, students are doing a really good job and being very responsible of cleaning up and putting activities back. And then a couple of other very quick updates. Cornfield characters, again, wonderful, really nice tradition that I'm so happy to be a part of. One of the conversations that we've started to engage some of our third-grade teachers with is the idea of involving our STEAM teacher moving forward and having the school support the project a little bit more rather than have it as in, more exclusively as an at-home. And when we think from that equity standpoint as well and being able to have as many students participate as possible, I think there's some real nice area for growth for this project as we kind of wrap in our STEAM teacher, who is very excited for, at the idea. So, we'll try to grow that moving forward. Grade-five students have started their PAL program with Officer Petroski, and that's going very well. We have our Madagascar Play next, I think it's Wednesday and Thursday, the 16th and 17th. That will be a lot of fun. And then we have our Main Street School and Lincoln Street School STEAM night from 5:30 to 7:30, also on the 17th. So, we have some exciting activities coming up for everybody.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you both. Okay, so that's going to bring us to committee reports. We already spoke a little bit about DEIJ or others did. Is there anything else that Patrick or Patty, you guys want to add or mention?
No, we did invite our DEIJ director to attend our meeting in January, so if anybody from the Public Monster attend that meeting, it should be a good opportunity to share some information, what he's currently involved in in our elementary schools.
Yeah. And I think that, you know, Esther and I spoke about having him give some types of updates on times when he's not here and the supports that are happening throughout the schools. He's been, DEIJ has been something that this board has definitely supported, so we want to see how that thread is kind of weaving through all of the schools.
I would just say it is really nice to have him to call, right?
Yes.
Like, lean on and bounce ideas off. We've been doing this, you know, for a little while now in Exeter, and it sure is nice to have that additional customer, so I would just add that.
That's great. Thank you. That brings us to facilities. I think we heard a little update about the preschool parking lot. I don't know of anything else that's happening that's, that's not our usual facilities maintenance thing, nothing on the radar. We haven't had any meetings for that. That brings us to negotiations. That's Patrick and I. We spent considerable amount of time recently, you so even more than I, looking through these proposals and back-and-forth encounters. Thank you. But we've had meetings at least once a week, if not more. We have one on Thursday, kind of a tight timeline. We're trying to work through, I guess, the requests on both sides, if you will. I don't know if there's anything more you want to say about it, Patrick?
Not really. I mean, just, there's, just continuing to have good discussions about ways of trying to improve the collective bargaining agreement. That's really all we can really say. I mean, everyone's been really good about being responsive and talking through things and trying to understand the rationale on both sides, and we're looking for ways of improving the contract.
Policy. So, it looks like we have some policies here. I don't know, Heather.
Yeah, so I can give an update on just the work of the policy committee really quickly, but then I didn't know if you wanted to wait until new business to go through.
Yeah, why don't we just wait for those at the end there? We can go through everything else, then kind of go through those.
Yeah, just a quick update is that I just want to, the policy committee met recently, and the central office did a tremendous job of, and maybe Esther, you could speak more about this, of really reviewing all of our policies and looking and really, I mean, presented a pretty, I would say, comprehensive, like, audit internal of our policies, which ones need to be updated, which ones we might want to take a look at. And so, and really coded all of those and started to prioritize those. And then the policy committee further discussed sort of how we might batch those in priority, focusing on health and safety first, things like that, things that are student-centered. And additionally, I guess, relevant to the DEIJ conversation, we talked about, you know, which, how we might also look at policies and review them through an equity lens. And so, I know we'll talk a little bit about those as really to the policies we're looking at today, but I think that's something, there's an opportunity there beyond looking at what specific policies are addressing bias, discrimination, et cetera, just also reviewing policies that will be coming forward with that lens as well. I don't know, Esther, if there's anything more you want to say about that, but it was tremendous, it was a tremendous amount of work, and I think we'll be great to go through this year.
Okay, safety and security. Anything new about that? I know you gave kind of that little update about, you know, HB 1178. Do you have anything to add, Patty?
I don't. I'm just trying to, the next meeting date is January 19th at Exeter High School at 9:00 AM.
Okay. Superintendent evaluation, Patty, there's anything going on with that?
We, no. We have a meeting later this month.
Later this month?
Yep.
Okay. We'll write funds. We spoke a bit about that at the last meeting. I don't know if there's any, been anything further going on with that?
No.
Nope, nope. Okay, and then our newest sort of committee endeavor, which is going to be a communications and community engagement committee, which I'm not entirely sure when that's going to start. Has anyone reached out to either of you?
So, it's not starting yet. I think it's waiting until there's an advisor from the senior leadership team. And so, I've been talking with David Ryan about that. And once he sort of picks who the advisor will be, then that group will get together. I think all of the different towns and boards have now selected at least one person. So, I think sort of the pieces are in place almost. We just get the advisor, and we'll, that group should meet soon.
Okay, great. Okay, so, we've got these policies to review, and then also in here, we have old businesses discussing our board goals. So, I, I assume.
Didn't do the budget presentation.
Oh, where is that?
Under principals.
I'm sorry, the budget presentation.
I don't see that.
It's under Tanya. I guess it's because it's under Tanya.
What?
Well, there you go. So, I apologize for moving forward in the agenda. If you're ready for that, we are ready.
So, similar to last year, I think we, you have the budget in front of you. Our intent was just to come forward and talk about any place that had some major changes so that you had some of that information as to the thinking of why those lines changed. So, we each have a couple of different sections that we'll talk about. So, it's, there are some major drivers, health insurance, special education, and food services. Those are some big areas that impacted our overall budget, and that the contract negotiations are still underway. So, that's also a consideration to make. First, I'm going to just address salary and personnel highlights. So, we, at both schools, we moved one permanent sub from our ESSER grant into our general fund. So, that moves three that we each currently have to four. Hopefully, we can get those filled, and it's just an anticipation of some of those grant monies. Some of them come from COVID-related sources that will become eventually obsolete, and so to make sure that we still have the capacity to do all the things that we need to do. There, you'll see some teacher salary changes due to replacement hires, and then there also appears to be some increases and decreases with interventionists. There's no new positions. We just combined some of the lines for clarity in the budget, so just moving things around so that people showed up in the appropriate places.
All right. The intention is to go through the packet that you have in order, you know, the 1,100s being salaries and then the 1,200s being. So, hopefully, as we go through this, it kind of follows through. So, for course, subject, area supplies, you know, we have some slight changes in student populations as well as consumables that created some savings in the budget. At Lincoln Street, one thing I just wanted to share was there's an increase in requested funds for our reading program, a little over $9,000, as the Journeys Reading Program initially included six years of consumables, and we've used that up. So, at this point, we're just outside that window, so we're purchasing some of those consumables moving forward into next year. Budgeting reflects the purchasing of most student supplies by the school district in an effort to reduce the financial burden on families. At Main Street, some of the UA supplies increased due to inflation as well as replacement materials. We have seen an increase in our ELL, or English, as a second language population, or English-language learners, excuse me. So, we need more funding for instructional materials and especially translation services to meet legal requirements. So, you'll see an increase there. And then, as we've talked about a little bit now, we do have our STEAM teachers at both buildings now, and our STEAM teachers need supply lines for both Main Street and Lincoln Street. You'll see the Main Street supply line for STEAM in the proposed budget. We saw this morning that the Lincoln Street supply line for STEAM was not there. It will be added. The next time that we come together in December, that will be reflected. But the number that we'll be asking for, which I believe is 4,000 for that supply line, will be the same for both schools.
All right, you get to see me again tonight. Diana is seeing her son be inducted into the National Honor Society, so.
Yay!
I'll do my best to represent the special ed budget, and of course, if you have questions that I can't answer, I can circle back. So, regarding contracted services, there's an increase at Lincoln Street and Main Street in these lines due to a reduction in the IDA grant funding and an increase in needs for behavioral health services. These lines also contain funding for contracted OTPT and services at our, the chartered school. In the special education tuition section, there was a reduction due to only one student projected to be out of district for Main Street School and two for Lincoln Street School. Lincoln Street did have one student return from an out-of-district placement, so you'll see that as well. And both the Main Street School and Lincoln Street Lines account for placement services and a 5% potential increase at those out-of-district placements. For personnel, we've added one paraeducator position at the Lincoln Street School in that line and three for Main Street School to meet student needs. We're asking for an increase of our part-time preschool teacher to be moved to full-time to meet enrollment and student needs. And part-time OT and paraeducator have been placed in the general fund. They were previously in the IDEA grant and have been moved over because of a reduced allocation of that grant fund. You'll also see Lincoln Street School special education teacher added, and that's for our Global Skills Program. And then some accounting organization, and she listed object codes here, so I'm just going to read them, bear with me. Object code 2162, which is physical therapy, was combined into the Main Street School line. Object code 2163, which was occupational therapy, so shows occupational therapist and certified occupational therapist combined into the Main Street School line. This isn't a change in personnel, only just a, a change in the line. Object code 2163 for Lincoln Street School occupies the part-time occupational therapist who came out of the IDA grant and was moved into that general fund. Again, not a change in personnel, only a change in where it's coming from. Paraprofessional lines and employees were re-categorized, resulting in some changes. For transportation, we have, the Main Street School and Lincoln Street School lines have been reduced to account for a reduced number of out-of-district students. And you'll notice an increase in the general education bus monitors, just for student safety and for driver retention. Also, I realized we're throwing a lot at you. If you wanted our notes later, we could give them to you.
Yeah, so I think, without knowing the code as to where they say, I'm like, okay, is that special education? Where is the general fund? I am an accountant, so I know what you're talking about.
So, I think, I can give it to you, and then it will tell you like kind of the area that it's coming from, so you could be like, "Wait, what?" And they send this thing, and so, I can leave you with our notes afterwards. Okay. So, now I'm going to be talking about the summer programming highlights.
And do we know where that?
It's after, so you'll see where special education is.
Oh, okay, so 1430.
You keep, yeah, if you keep going, I think summer school comes after those lines.
Yeah.
The line, their presentation goes in order, so when she said general fund, she was talking about special ed section.
Okay.
The general fund within special ed.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, now we're done the 1,200s, and we move on to 1,400s.
Thank you. Okay.
Thanks. So, for summer school, our summer school programming is largely supported with funds from Title I. We do not have additional services, but you'll see that some lines were cleaned up just for transparency purposes. The original lines were kind of worded funky, and they weren't very clear on what those, exactly what they meant. So, the categories now denote summer programming materials and summer programming salaries and stipends, and so those have just been combined into those two lines, but there has been no changes. The cost for ESY or extended school year salaries for teachers and paraeducators remains the same as last year, and the contracted services line for ESY or extended school year accounts for additional board-certified behavior analyst hours and the contracting of registered behavior technician services or RBTs.
I'm just going to touch base on technology, which is page eight in your packet. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Well, then, page eight is, can be helpful.
That's all right. I'll find it.
Sorry. I thought I got ahead of it.
Tech department?
Yes, technology, so for.
Page 14.
Technology service contracts. The reduction in the budget is due to recent purchases through ESSER money and federal reimbursement with the Emergency Connectivity Fund, or ECF. The budget amount for the year '23 or for fiscal year '24 is more consistent with past years, so that reduction of roughly 19% or so is in line with past years. We had a couple of increases, but again, that was also due to some of the grant funds that we had.
Okay. And then, the last major change you'll see is just for admin telephone, and that's because both of our schools, actually, all the SAU schools, they had a major phone project that was completed, and so you'll see a decrease at both of our schools in that area for that reason.
And that's for in-school phone services?
Yeah, mm-hmm. Otherwise, essentially, all of our line items stayed about the same. Those are just the major changes. the major changes.
So I think overall, the important thing to keep in mind is the major changes, the drivers were the health insurance. So a benefit, because that guaranteed maximum rate came in at 15.6%. We remember last year, you may recall, it came in at 0%. So that's a big differential, particularly if you have a larger staff, that is a big number. As well as the changes that Abby spoke to in special education. A lot of those IDEA funds, grant funds, that were our allocation decreased. So we had to move things out of the IDEA into the operating budget. As she mentioned, many of them are not new positions, but positions that already existed, but had to be moved into this budget because the grant funds don't, won't, we anticipate will not be as large. That's what we've been seeing and told. Right.
Yes.
The only additional thing, I believe, was the preschool, trying, putting that to a point one.
Yeah, and just to speak to that, so right now, we have one and a half preschool teachers. And so next year will be really great, where we'll be able to offer four days a week for our three-year-olds as well as our four-year-olds. And our needs really are there, and our student numbers really should be for that.
I think at the beginning, you mentioned food services as well.
I'm just going to speak to that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we had to put in additional 50?
75.
75 because of the increase of food costs. You'll see, it's higher than that. The year before, we remember that was we were able to feed everyone. So we went back a couple years with Jean Pearson, looked at what the percentage was being fed before that free for everyone, and then looked at the increase in food costs and used that percentage. So you won't see as large of increase. It kind of doesn't make sense, because it looks like we spent more and then we're, but we're not. It's because everybody was eating. And now we've based it on the percentage pre-COVID and what percentage is eating lunch now. But because food costs have risen, we put some money in there. So those are the major drivers that give you an overall increase of, are you going to talk to that, Molly?
Yeah, so the overall increase is 2.13%, but I just want to highlight two changes that are kind of outside of their world. We did have a decrease in the bond payments because your bond schedule.
Yeah.
And then also, there's a decrease in the percent for New Hampshire retirement. So teachers went from a 21.02 to 19.38%. And employees went from 14.06 to 13.53%. So since your teachers are negotiating, you're seeing a decrease in here. But overall, there will probably be an increase when you combine everything together. But that's why you see the large decrease in here. So just wanted to highlight that.
Do you have, you don't necessarily have to have it today, but at some point, would you be able to give us what the increase would be? Let's say we propose this budget, the 2% increase budget, 2.13%. If it wasn't passed, what percent, or what would the budget number be without that?
So you mean the default budget?
Exactly.
Yeah, so we're working on calculating that. So we'll have that next month.
Because, I mean, I think that's always something I'm interested in. I mean, I heard you, Esther, talk about things like, you know, health insurance. We don't have any control over that. Or food service costs. We do, I think there's a good argument and need at special education, but adding new teachers or professionals there, we could, we at least potentially have some discretion with that. But some things we don't have any discretion with. You know, health insurance, we don't have any discretion with. It's part of collective bargaining. It's provided. It is what it is. So, you know, so we need to understand what the differences are between those things.
Yep. So at the budget workshop, we'll have the default budget for you. So you can, that will be clear.
Yeah.
But in all reality, the major drivers, most, the majority of them are items that
Aren't discretionary.
are contractual.
Right, right.
So there isn't a lot to play with. We, we looked to try to get it at 1.99 for Patrick O'Day. And it was going to be tough. So if that's the request, we can do that for the budget workshop, certainly. But we, there isn't, there just aren't a lot of places to play with, because so many are already set.
Well, and I just probably misspoke to a moment ago, where I said maybe some of the special education ones are discretionary, because they may not be, depending on what the student population is. So we don't have to talk about that right now. But I understand the difference between those things. But there may be some areas where there's some discretion. I'm not saying there's not a good argument to be made why we have it, but at least we can understand the difference. So we can make those arguments to the public if we support it as a board.
Right. Okay. Thank you all. That's great.
So just to be clear, Ryan and Tanya, you're going to send that sheet to me, and I will send it to the board members and give one for the minutes.
So that is going to bring us to the policies.
Did you take my cheat sheet?
Now, are these first reads?
So these are first reads, although maybe before, well.
No, he needs to go.
You go.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So these are first reads. However, these are policies that are already established. They have to be renewed every four to five years. I think the policy committee met and discussed them. And the only recommended change was to revise them for gender-neutral language. So there are several of them that refer to he, she, for example, throughout. So that was one recommendation. I don't know if you, I mean, Heather did send like a brief line about each policy, but there are no recommended changes, and they are policies that are in existence. These are, this is just compliance to, we're asked to review them regularly. And you're nodding, is there any?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend to the board that you approve them as presented with the new, with the gender-neutral language, because there's been no changes. It's really a requirement from, and a recommendation from the auditors to read, to look at these each year on a cycle.
All right. Do you have anything to add?
No, that, is there, no, I don't have anything to add. I'd like to make a motion to approve, do I have to list the policies or just? Policies as presented with the change of revision to use gender-neutral language.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Okay. And then I think the last thing we're going to talk about is board goals, if any. I know that I sent, I apologize every time I start to send these to you guys. I was driving in my car, and then it was like, I didn't send those. So Esther had sent to us before the last meeting, sort of just a snapshot of some old goals that we had, you know, sort of discussion about old goals that we had and ideas. And then Heather also had presented, sorry, had supplied me with some, some thoughts on her own. And I don't know if, Patrick's not here, no, he had to adjourn. I don't know if, I know that last, the last meeting, you weren't here. And I shared with them and kind of read through what you, you know, kind of your highlights. I'm not sure I read every word, but I don't know if people have had further thoughts about it, or?
Yeah, I mean, I thank you for including, I mean, the three that I, I shared were community, family engagement, DEIJ, and holistic student success. And so I think that if, I guess, through the lens and, you know, of our role from a policy and budget perspective of how do we help support those goals, which I think are goals that we've been discussing since my tenure, and I know longer than that. So those are, those are my suggestions. I mean, I can read them again. But I guess my only other question around them is, is then to maybe, whatever goals we land on, if in further discussion, we really think about, like, what would success look like for us? Like, are there a couple of benchmarks that we would love to focus on in those? Because they're broad, right? And I think we were already doing the work, but to name them would be helpful for us to be able to measure our progress and to be able to talk about what progress looks like from our perspective, I guess largely from a policy and financial perspective.
I like all of the three goals that you included. I would like to still include safety and security as a fourth goal. I think as an SAU, some of these goals are kind of like SAU goals also, which I think is important. I think it should be that way. And I think, like, let's say, the holistic student success, at the end of the year, we are going to, you know, we supported what the administrators wanted in the testing, and now they're reporting out to us, like, we'll be able to see and measure some of that. That'll be, you know, obvious at the end of the year. We, as a joint board member, supported the hiring of the DEIJ director, and then letting him start to work with our elementary schools as well. So I think there are, I think it's really important to think of that when we're establishing goals, like, are these measurable?
Yeah.
And I think they are.
I think so too. I mean, for the DEIJ, just to, because it's been a minute, but like, ensure that our schools are fully welcoming and supporting all students and families by prioritizing a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice at every level and across departments, supported by district policy, and you could say, budget, right? So our role is not to, like, do that work, but we're supporting it by, as a policy committee, looking at our policies through an equity lens and prioritizing which policies to review or to add if needed.
Or positions.
Supporting positions to support the DEIJ work, yeah. And I think we would want to look at all of them through, through what, through our role as board. But, yeah, I think we're already doing a lot of this. I guess it's just, it would be helpful to name sort of what, what, how we're measuring progress already.
Yeah, I think that's always sort of the, I don't want to say tricky part, but we oftentimes talk about not having goals that are sort of just fluff, if you will, and stuff that we're sort of working towards. I mean, I think that, for me, sort of, I sort of like a hybrid of what you both are talking about. For me, the, the safety, social, emotional learning, and diversity, equity, inclusion are sort of a common thread for me, meaning that we, I want the kids to come here and feel safe, feel supported, feel welcome, feel, you know, heard. And I'm not entirely sure where we measure all of those components, other than I know that the work is being done. And I think that's important, maybe to get some reporting out, like we asked for this evening, on the DEIJ and maybe other things that we used to, you know, the Behavioral Intervention Conference that you guys are going to, you know, that's a place where we can get more sort of information about how we move forward. Do you guys still have those committee meetings regularly? I know some of those are
Our BIT team, yeah. We meet every, we meet once a month.
Once a month.
Regional elementary team.
Okay. Anyway, those are my thoughts. And I think those pieces sort of set up the student success as well as the testing and the learning and all the, the other pieces. What do you think, Susan?
Well, I was thinking, I was thinking also, going along right with you, but also thinking that the first of your goals that you presented to us, Heather, sort of speak to our newly formed, soon-to-be-formed committee. And so it mirrors
Communication.
our communication, which is vital for our schools, our board, our staff, our students, and families, just to have that connection and to work on it. I think it's an important goal.
I think physical safety is very different than the safety, the mental health of students. So I still think it's a standout by itself.
Well, yes, but I do think to some students, them coming here and feeling physically safe is part of them feeling comfortable in school.
Yeah.
That's my opinion from, you know, the, the, the safety, we've also been working on for a long time and been supporting that. So I know that those changes still continue to come up, of course, but.
I would support adding a fourth to just be more intentional. I think what, I think the other piece that sometimes we don't talk about with the diversity, equity, inclusion piece is like accessibility, like more than just accommodating, like how are we, you know, like universal design, but both in physical space, but also curriculum, you know, that would fall under DEIJ for me. But I think what you're, what is the safety and security initiatives and the work that that committee is doing, I think those policies are different policies. It's a different, I mean, if, if we feel like, I wouldn't, I would
I think we need to make decisions when it comes to physical security through the lens of, is this benefiting all of our students? Would this decision impact some in a negative way or a positive way? But I do think, I mean, our SAU is a model for the state for physical security measures. And what we're doing also with BIT and all of those things too. I see the crossover, but I do think it stands alone.
Well, I actually think that diversity, equity, inclusion should be through all of our goals, but also be its own goal. Like, I don't, it needs to be part of community and family engagement. It has to be part of what we think of when we think about holistic student success. But I also think it's its own, its own goal. And I would say the same for what you're talking about. I think DEIJ has to be core to those strategies and the policies, but it also is its own imperative.
Patty, do you have any language for that?
No.
Permission?
That would, I, I think we should
Yes, Patrick's not here, but I hate to kick the can down the
Why don't we create a shared document?
Yeah.
And then we can come to an agreement before we come to our next meeting. You know, we can have a brief discussion for the public, but we can do that, right?
Can we have a, I don't know.
Can we have a shared document?
You can have a shared document if you share it with me, and I'll send it out individually to folk people.
Okay.
And they can add their own thing, and then they can send it back to me. And I can put it all in one document by December 1st, or whatever date you want to come up with.
Okay.
The meeting isn't until the 13th or 14th.
Well, we don't usually have a December meeting.
So are we just doing a budget?
I don't know. We're going to talk, yeah, I think we need to talk about that tonight. I'm fine either way. I'm just saying often
We can do a budget and goal workshop, and just do those two things in December if you wanted to.
That sounds great.
That might be.
That sounds great. That would be helpful.
I think that's a great idea.
You just have those two agenda items.
Yep.
That's good.
If that's an option.
That sounds perfect. Yeah.
Which day?
Which date are we going to do it on?
Didn't we have a date?
We have both dates held.
Yeah.
We have the first Tuesday, which I think is the 8th, right?
No, the 6th is the first Tuesday.
It's the 6th or the 13th.
Okay.
Originally, the 6th was the budget workshop.
Oh, we had both dates. You're right. We had both dates.
And the 13th was held for a meeting.
I vote for the 6th.
So I'm, I'm thinking for people generally earlier in the month, people
We could also, we also could change it to the last week of November, if people would prefer to not meet in December. Too much?
It's totally what you got, obviously.
You know what I mean? Like, we could, we could Okay. Oh, that, yeah, so that's a no.
Yeah. That's probably not a great
So, December 6th. What time?
Well, right now, it's already established at 6 o'clock, but I'm, I'm
I can, it hasn't been posted yet. It's just on our calendar. So whatever you want to do.
I can come in.
6 o'clock works for me, frankly.
So I'll post that as a workshop with two agenda items, budget and board goals, correct?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing? And I will not post for the 13th. There'll be no meeting.
Correct.
That'll, that's what we're doing in December.
Perfect.
Yes?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Good?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you all.
All right. So with that, is there any old business? Is there any new business? Does anyone want to go home? So with that, I will end this meeting of the exit.
You need to go into, you told me you need to go into not public, no? Yes?
Do I?
Or was it?
That was last
Might have been stratum.
Might have been stratum.
It was stratum.
It was stratum.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think we're good. All right. At 7:58, meeting adjourned.